Good evening. I'd like to call to order the November 30th Regular Planning Commission Meeting. It's now 5:31. If we could have a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Fonda Bernardi?
Here.
Commissioner Fonda. Commissioner Fresco?
Here.
Commissioner Lambert?
Here.
Commissioner Landrus?
Here.
Commissioner Pulten is absent today. Commissioner Raskin?
Here.
And Chair Reese.
Present. Next on our agenda would be the Planning Director's Report. Could ask the Director to give us a report.
Good evening, Commissioner. Hope everyone's doing well. Coming up at your next meeting, which is a week from tonight, December 7th, Further discussion on the Housing Element Implementation, Discussion on Final ADU Grant Presentation, 1521 17th Street Tentative Map. That's for a condominium project. Then December 14th, again, more discussion on Housing Element, And then a Resolution of Intention for Amendments to Zoning Ordinance, Moos, Bergamai Area Plan, Downtown Committee Plan, For consistency with the recently adopted state legislation, City Council Actions, then to note Terms of Planning Issues, And then upcoming City Council Items. Or so on December 6th, we have the installation of the two new council members and As reinstatement of Vana, who's continuing. And then December 13th is a special meeting. The only other thing I would add to this is that We did receive an appeal For the project that the Commission reviewed a couple of meetings ago, I think, the Small market in the Ocean Park neighborhood. That approval has been appealed. Don't think we have a hearing date yet for this city council. And that concludes my report.
Great. Thank you very much, Commissioners. Do you have questions? I see Commissioner Landrus with his hand up. Please go ahead.
Yeah, and I'm really sort of not entirely clear about where to ask this, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask it here. What is the city's policy of regarding Press and promotional communications related to projects that have not yet come before the Planning Commission? On behalf of the city?
I'm not sure I understand exactly what you mean, so.
Okay, I'll give you the direct example. There is a project scheduled to come before us in December. It is, I wanna keep it, you know, I don't wanna, we all wanna keep an open mind about this. And it's something that I believe is within the Planning Commission's discretion. It was included in a recent press release issued by a city, by the city trumpeting A wide number of projects that are bringing the economic recovery back to the city of Santa Monica. I understood the inclusion of the others. They've all been, you know, they've all gone through their core approvals. I mean, you know, the Miramar was in there and it still has to go through design review.
Yeah.
Into coastal, it's right, it's This project, which I won't name, but you know the project I'm talking about, Hasn't even begun to make its way through the process, and I found it really inappropriate For the city of Santa Monica to be implying that it was putting its finger on the scale When it hasn't been through review. And, you know, another news agency picked up the press release and ran it without comment, and the headline sort of really implies that, You know, on the one hand, if we vote it through, then we're just rubber stamping a decision that's already been made somewhere else, and if we turn it down, then I don't know, we're anti-economic recovery, or, you know, it just puts us in terrible position. And
Yeah.
So I wanted to know if, you know, if there's an existing policy that I don't know about, and we should just soldier on, okay, I don't think it's a great one, but I'll follow it. But if there isn't, I'd like to suggest that You be involved in those press releases and, and make sure that things don't go out that don't imply, you know, Approvals or rejections that haven't happened.
Yeah. Yeah, I understand what you're talking about. I'm not sure if there is an official policy. It's not unusual for there to be press about pending projects. I mean, that, that happens. I would, and I'd have to go back and look at the press release you're talking about, but I, I hope that it was clear that, you know, where You know, the Miramar and the Geary Hotel and some of the other projects we're talking about were, are approved. You know, I'm hoping that there was something about this was pending approval, but I.
It's getting the approval process, but it was included above head of the headline, and it was very clear that the, you know, it was sort of, It was, it was, any reader who wasn't paying a lot of attention for whom, you know, are, we want our, we want everybody out there to have trust in the work that we all do, is, You know, the city and the Planning Commission, all of that. I think to anybody who's giving it a glance, It implied, well, we're hoping it gets approved. Well, you know.
Yeah, it may as be seen, right? Yeah, I understand the comment.
So I just wanted to bring that up and hopefully make sure it doesn't happen again.
Got it.
Thanks.
Sure.
Commissioner Fonda Bernardi?
Can you, can you update us on if we are going to be meeting in person next year, and if so, when?
I don't know if we have an exact date yet. My understanding is by the end of February is when we'd be back in person, if not sooner. Jing, do we have anything more definitive yet on that?
I think that's right. Yeah, it's lining up with, you know, what, what we have been told as the end of, the governor ending The emergency orders at the end of February. So the city is gearing up to Return to in-person meetings, you know, after that. So we would anticipate beginning in March That the Commission would be returning to in-person meetings. We are working with the City Clerk's Office to arrange for Training, since it's a kind of a new system in the council chamber. It's, it's pretty intuitive. It's all touchscreen, but We will be arranging that for the Commission in the new year. January and February, obviously, before we, before we delve back into that.
Great. Thank you very much. Any other questions, Commissioners? Dean None, I will thank you, Director Martin, for your report and your responses, and we'll move on in the agenda. Okay. So next, we'll continue down with, with announcements. Please note tonight's procedures for public comment. We are accepting real-time oral public comment by phone for each item. Please check the top of the posted agenda For the phone number to call once the caller queue for each item opens. The caller queue will be open when each item is introduced And will close after the first five public comments have been heard. Written comments received up until noon today have been read by the Commission. Comments received before 12:00 p.m. today will be considered part of the record Of the proceedings, but may not be posted online with the Planning Commission's agenda prior to the meeting. Another announcement, the moderator chat function of Blue Jeans is for technical help only. You cannot communicate with the Commissioners. We cannot communicate with each other. This is for technical assistance only. Commissioners, do you have any further announcements? Seeing none, we're gonna move on in the agenda to Consent Calendar. And we have one item on our consent calendar. I'm curious, do we have any speakers on this first? Well, I guess we have to open the, we have to open the, let's open the call in.
While you're, while you're waiting to see, you may wanna do your expartes.
Yep. Okay. Does anybody have any ex parte communications? I am seeing at least four heads shaking. No, I do not have any. I'm assuming Commissioner Fonda Bernardi does not either. From, We're, we'll wait, we'll give at least a minute for the public to come on, but is anybody at this point prepared to pull this off of the consent calendar?
I have a, I have a question, not, don't need to, I mean, The answer is no, and then I don't need to pull it. My question is, This site is not, is this site on, this site is not on the list of builders remedy sites, is it?
I'm sorry, the loose remedy?
The builder's remedy. This is not one of the builder's remedy.
Oh, 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 no, no.
Okay, cool. Thanks.
Okay, so let's, we're still gonna give it a little time here to get through at least that One minute to see if we have a caller.
We have not received any calls.
Great. Thank you very much. Okay, can I please have a motion to move the consent calendar? I see a first by Lambert?
Yes.
And a second, please?
I was like it.
Commissioner Raskin is a second. Get a roll call vote.
Commissioner Fonda Bernardi?
Yes.
Commissioner Fresco?
Yes.
Commissioner Lambert?
Yes.
Commissioner Landrus?
Yes.
Commissioner Raskin?
Yes.
And Chair Reese.
Yes. That item is moved forward. We'll move on in our agenda. We have no agenda items under items three, four, five, six, seven, and eight, so we'll go to item nine, which is Continued discussion of the implementation of the six-cycle housing element programs. And we'll open up the caller queue now, please. And then we'll ask staff for their staff report.
Give me a moment. Good evening, Commission. We are back with the second part of the second grouping of amendments. Tonight is a focus on what we're kind of calling these special Programs to incentivize housing, kind of areas where we've not seen it before. The focus is on The moderate income housing overlay, The incentivizing housing on community assembly sites, and then also incentivizing housing on surface parking lots. So that is the listing and the purpose of tonight's agenda. You can see this is where we're at. This is our fifth Meeting, discussion on these housing redlines. You will shortly be getting a staff report this week for next week's meeting focusing on SB9 and ADUs. Before we jump into that, as we always do, it's always helpful just to recap The discussion from the last meeting, make sure that we captured The general highlights of the Commission's discussion with respect to streamlined approvals. We heard from you That you wanted staff to work with the City Attorney's Office to ensure that One acre threshold to qualify for administrative approval is compliant With housing element law. So we are looking Into that, as I think as we shared, we did have consultations with HCD About that provision previously, but we were following up on that where we can. The Commission had also generally asked for, for staff to return With options for deadlines to approve housing projects, kind of similar to SB3, not exactly, but I think in that ilk. There was also consider allowing some of the formal applications concurrent with the 75-day waiting period associated with demolition permit applications. And then there was also Some, there was discussion about updating the development review permit findings, Particularly those that mention compatibility, general welfare of the community, and several adverse Effects. I think the concern there was, you know, how those things are measured, and, you know, those seemed a bit vague. So We don't have all of that for you tonight, but we just wanted to make sure that we captured, You know, generally, the overall discussion and direction from the Commission. And when we come back with, with some revisions for your And I'll just pause there, I think, just to make sure that there's any questions or comments about that.
Well, I, I think that, I know that all of those items were on our list. Commissioner Lambert, do you have a comment?
I just, I just have a question, Jing. When we went through the one acre threshold, you put up a, a listing of SSI properties, and I can't remember, there were seven or eight of them. And, and three of the, only three of them that are greater than an acre would actually fall into this bucket, because the others were fifth-cycle sites, right?
Correct, yes.
But those fifth-cycle sites only go through ministerial if they provide 20% low-income housing.
Right.
My question is whether that's feasible given these sites, and that's, that's just a rhetorical question, because I don't think we know the answer, but it is a question.
But I, I think we also talked a little bit that there were other sites that were Out there in the city that might be impacted by this, because I at first thought, yeah, it's only three sites, it's not a big deal, but I'm pretty sure I was corrected As the meeting went along.
Yeah, right.
Okay. Okay, so I don't see any other Commissioners raising your hand, so Jing, I think you've, you've summarized that properly, and we appreciate that.
Okay. And then, so next one was the streamlining Design review, and I think what we heard overall was to consider allowing the option As a suggestion, and, you know, for the proposed red lines to have the applicant elect To have the ARB review occur after the entitlements. I think you heard some public comment About that, and it seemed that the Commission was interested, you know, in seeing That as an option. And then I think there was discussion largely about like the level of detail, you know, sort of That the process seemed generally okay, but just that You know, questions that, you know, the extensive detail, you know, that may Have previously been required or what have you, you know, that's, that's not something, I think just assurance, that's not something that You know, the ARB has been discussing or that staff incentives going forward, particularly around things like irrigation plans and lighting. You don't require irrigation plans now. That may have just been, you know, people remembering things from, you know, previous things, but our application forms don't actually require that. So Those are, I think, kind of the, the major points that we heard out of the Streamlining design review discussion. And then the applicability of the zoning ordinance to city-owned sites, there wasn't, you know, I think there was general support for the proposed red lines With that particular amendment to the zoning ordinance.
Any comments, Commissioners?
Great.
I am gonna take that as we are comfortable with your summary.
All right. So we'll delve into the main topics for tonight, which is First one is Program 2A, which is the moderate income affordable housing overlay, and this is moderate income defined as up to 120% AMI. And this is targeted to the half-mile radius around the Expo, the Metro Line Transit Stations. You did want to clarify here that this does exclude our residentially zoned parcels As proposed in the red lines. They must be 100 moderate income units with a minimum size of 250 square feet. Projects are limited to maximum of 33% non-residential that is consistent with the With the definition of 100% affordable housing and the zoning Ordinance. And then development incentives that are special to, you know, this particular overlay Is we're trying to give them the same incentives or similar incentives that 100% affordable housing projects for lower income get, which is the extra 33 feet above the base height. The 50%, it's a 50% density bonus above this base of ARs. If you recall Earlier in the Housing Element discussions, we had proposed, you know, something in the realm of 80%, but I think through discussions, it was all that should be pulled back. And they are being offered up to four incentives and concessions and no minimum parking requirements. And I think most importantly, with the moderate income, There is flexibility in the unit size, so there is no unit size or mix requirement that applies To these projects, and that is in exchange for additional common area amenities. This particular map here Shows the maximum possible height, you know, within, with the addition of the extra 33. You know, and the, the, within the half-mile radius around the Expo stations. One policy question that we did want to raise for the Planning Commission's operation Is whether residentially zoned parcels Should be excluded. This is a matter of policy, you know, you certainly don't have to. Reasons, you know, that we excluded the residentially zoned parcels from this overlay Is obviously to not incentivize displacement of existing Residential units, but we did want to just share the data about, you know, what that means. 59% of the parcels within the moderate housing overlay are residentially zoned. They're mostly R2 and R3. And then 4.7% of total rent control units in the city Are in the moderate income overlay. You can see here, those are the blue parcels. You know, so it's, it is a substantial number of parcels, but You know, that's not proposed in the red lines to include the residentially zoned parcels again. You know, to incentivize, you know, these sorts of projects, but not encourage displacement Of existing units was really the driving factor there. But, you know, we, I thought, you know, wanted to ask at least that policy question, just so that we can affirm that that is the right direction To go. So that's something for the Commission's discussion tonight and a question that we are asking you. Moving on to Program 4B, which is the community assembly surface parking lots. And the purpose of this program is to incentivize surface parking lots for the production Of affordable housing. So the conditions here Are that they must include the community assembly use as the primary use On the site, and then the projects must include at least 50% affordable units, affordable to 80% AMI households. We heard through the Housing Element process from Community assembly uses, you know, some places of worship who are interested in this, That they were interested in potentially having the flexibility for some market rate to support this sort of a project. So that was included in the program. And the development incentives here are that they process the administrative approvals, Extra 33 feet above the base height, unlimited density, and no minimum parking requirements. And these are, you can see here, approximately 41 community assembly sites Throughout the city, maybe a little bit difficult to read, but you can see here that the red, The legend here, that the red showing the low potential, orange showing Medium, and then the green are the high potential sites that were identified In our SSI. And I think the question here Is, you know, as you look at the red lines, should qualifying projects on community assembly sites also be exempt from Unit mix and TDM requirements? We are proposing that they are subject To unit mix and TDM requirements. You know, given that there's a distinction between these projects and like 100% affordable housing Projects, you know, so that was kind of the rationale in having 100% affordable, having You know, sort of the greatest advantages and More relief than, you know, any other types of projects in the code. So that was, that's kind of a distinction. But it is a policy question. We are asking, you know, as to whether What's proposed in the red lines is something the Commission agrees with. And then the third special program is with respect to incentivizing housing on surface parking lots in residential zones. I think we do want to clarify here, the purpose here obviously is to Incentivize housing on a lot of these underutilized sites that are residentially zoned. So they do need to be residentially zoned, surface parking lots. It is a far bigger, I know we talk a lot about A lots, but it is a much bigger universe than just A lots in the city, so this would be all residentially zoned Surface parking lots in the city, including those, we have some that are in R1 zones as well. So the, the conditions here are that they must be residentially zoned surface parking lots, and they must not remove existing dwelling units. So these have to be vacant Surface parking lots. Development incentives here would be based on the, the unit density calculations for the underlying residential District, so that would not be including the unit caps, the density caps. So that would just be the underlying density. For R1 parcels, we are, we had to create one, so the maximum density there is one unit per 2,000 square feet on the R1 parcels That are surface parking lots. For minimum, minimum interior Side setbacks, when it's developed together with the associated adjacent commercial parcels. So we were thinking about a situation You know, which is not uncommon, where you have a commercial parcel and a residential parcel that are budding each other. They might even be associated with each other. No interior side setback on the residential parcel is required From the shared parcel line or the alley. You know, we didn't Want to create a situation where you're having this like sort of odd gap, you know, forcing a gap between two buildings when it could just be one Development. And then any required parking on that residential parcel would need to be placed within the project. And a, a, another removal or barrier that we've heard about is That you allow access from the residentially zoned parcel even to the associated commercial parcel. So there is like particularly, there's provisions in there that, you know, say that where there's a conflict, you know, This, this section and like the A lot Overlay, this particular section on surface parking lots. We kind of didn't want to amend the A lots, because that's sort of its own thing, you know, this is, like I said, you know, this, this program covers sort of a bigger universe Than just A lots. And you can see here the effect that, you know, there's about 99 parking lots, Surface parking lots within residential zones, of which 16 Have high potential for redevelopment, and those are highlighted In the green, and you can see that they're sort of, you know, kind of Dotted largely, probably along like, kind of like Wilshire Boulevard on the northern Side of the city, and, you know, these, these programs to incentivize redevelopment of these underutilized sites, the reason, you know, that there is an AFFH rationale For this as well, you know, recognizing that it was a way to, you know, incentivize Housing development, you know, and maybe sort of the northern parts of the city For AFFH reason. In the housing element, and these sites are included in the SSI. You know, and they have capacity associated with them, so it's important to incentivize that as much as possible On these surface parking lots. So that's a review of those three special programs for tonight, and I think we can now move into any questions or discussion.
Commissioner Lambert first, and then Landrus?
I want to start with the moderate income, or we're calling District. Jing, is there anything, if, if we needed to include some market rate housing in these projects to ensure feasibility, because frankly, I'm becoming more and more clear That it's not feasible, would that be in violation of the Housing Element?
Um, you know, let me take a look at the program, actually.
Well, we talked about 100%, but, but with a density bonus units, like the density bonus program of the state, Could those be, at least a portion of them be market rate?
Yeah, I mean, I, I guess I'll say Through the process, we, we heard from I think primarily one, moderate income developer. This is not a Not a common thing, you know, because it's Type of project to pull together. He did not mention, you know, that market rate was necessary. What the, what was indicated was that what was important Was flexibility in the unit size, because what's important is actually The total number of units That they're able to get into the envelope. Like, so that ability to have flexibility in unit size was actually quite important. You know, but I, I will say, like, the projects that they have done have largely been in LA Where land costs are cheaper and the numbers maybe works better. You know, we, it, it was, I think, I don't think we quite ever got sort of numbers on, you know, Santa Monica, so It's, it's kind of hard for us to know, you know, that, that feasibility, just basing off that feedback of just like trying to put together a program. it's kind of hard for us to know, you know, that feasibility, which is basing off that feedback of just like trying to put together a program, you know, without, it's not yet tested, you know, so I hear what you're saying, and I'm just checking the the program itself, whether it was.
Yeah, I just, I mean, my question is whether if we find that we need to include some market rate units to internally subsidize the project, would that violate the housing law?
No, I mean, I think looking at, so I guess I'll say like the, the program itself doesn't say like market rate is absolutely prohibited. But I also don't think that that was maybe in the spirit of what has been discussed throughout this process. You know, it's always been discussed of only moderate income units, there's still like de-restricted affordable, like de-restricted moderate income. You know, and so that was the justification for like, what are some very, very strong development incentives? You know, they're basically getting everything that like lower income, you know, affordable housing would get, other than the unlimited density.
Other than public funding.
Yeah, other than that, yeah, yeah, so.
That's a big one.
You know, it's a fair question. I just, I just, it's not the idea of adding market rate, and it's just not something that has been discussed thus far.
I just wonder what the rationale, and I can't remember, and I know we discussed this, of allowing the community assembly sites to have fifty percent market rate conceivably at the same AB seventeen sixty-three benefits.
Well, with, with the community assembly sites, it's not exactly that, I think because this one was fifty percent affordable, I think they're not getting the extra incentives, if I'm not mistaken.
No, they're getting AB seventeen sixty-three. They're getting the thirty-three feet.
Yeah, I understand that. No, I mean, I, I'm remembering the market rate came from discussions from community assembly landowners who have actually expressed interest, and they were like, we think we really do need market rate to make this work for us. So that's where that.
It's a little bit part of that discussion. And then the other question is, you, you've not put a limit on the density on the community assembly sites, but you have on the moderate income projects. Is there a reason for that?
I think, like I said, it came, it kind of came out of the process. You know, we, I think we originally started with a proposal of thinking about unlimited density, but then there was a desire to distinguish moderate, moderate overlay from the lower income affordable housing. You know, we discussed eighty percent, and then I think through this, through this public hearing process, you know, it reduced to fifty percent. It doesn't mean we couldn't do more. Fifty percent is what is mentioned, you know, it's the minimum, it certainly could be higher. I think I would also note that, you know, these are, we've obviously never done programs like this, and, you know, it may be something that we need to start and see like if it's not working, you know, with monitoring, and say, hey, we're not getting any projects, like what's wrong here? You always have the opportunity to tweak it, you know, to make some sort of like adjustments.
If you can anticipate that, it would be a good thing, too.
Yeah.
Just, I'm going to put my walk hat on now. On page, it's on page six of the staff report. Seven thousand one hundred and fifty rent control units is actually twenty-seven percent of the rent control supply, not four. The largest concentration of rent control units is in Wilma. Because you say there's seven thousand one hundred and fifty units of rent controlled housing in our.
That's more, oh, we must have been.
Target area.
Hold all or something. Okay, yep, no, you're right about that.
And then also just for clarification, the state density bonus program does have a program for moderate income housing. If you, if you provide forty-four percent of the units as moderate income, you get your full fifty percent et cetera, but it's only for homeownership.
No, it's only for, yeah, exactly. I was about to say, it's only for homeownership, not for rental.
Right, but the point is they're looking at the need for market rate housing to make that moderate income housing work. Anyway, those are all my questions. Thank you.
Okay, let's stick on this, let's stick on this moderate issue again, commissioners, do other people have comments? And we haven't heard a response to the question of should they include residential zoning or not? So I'm going to go to Commissioner Landris, please.
So I just want to, I'm sorry to butt in, just want to make sure that you decide when you want to comment.
Let's, as we've opened that, do we have any callers?
We do have one caller in the queue.
This will be the beauty of being back in person, I think. We will not keep tripping over this issue, or I won't keep tripping over it. So can we please hear from the public?
Last four digits, four zero five one, you are now in the meeting, and you have three minutes for your comment. If you could please state your full name and then.
I don't actually have a comment.
Okay.
Thank you. Do we have any other commenters?
That was the only person in the queue.
Okay, we'll have a discussion here, we'll, but for a little while, let's leave it open and see if we give any other callers. So Commissioner Landris, you are next, and then I saw Bonnemanardi, and now I see Fresco. So let's go to Commissioner Landris first.
Okay, we're just talking about moderate right now, so.
I think.
I agree with you, yeah. So I'll just focus, I mean, I have other questions about other things, but I'm wondering from a policy writing standpoint, is there a way for us to include the residential parcels but exclude certain categories of residential parcels? So could we include residential parcels but exclude rent-controlled properties? Could we include resident, could we include R one residential parcel? Could we include R three? I'm just curious, what, what, can we do this with a scalpel rather than with a nap?
I, I mean, I think we could. We'd have to, you know, we'd have to obviously just, you know, take a look at, depending on what categories, you know, you're thinking about it, you're mentioning like rent control or R one. You know, we just have to kind of look at it to make sure it doesn't end up being very weird or strange to implement or difficult in some way. But I don't, sort of like off the top of my head, I don't see why that would not be a possibility.
Okay, I would, I mean, and I would ask if we can study that. To the extent that it's possible, I would want to study excluding rent-controlled properties. I'd want to study excluding, and I'd want to study excluding everything but multifamily. So we would, like, what does it look like if we don't do rent-controlled properties? What does it look like if we do, if we allow it in R one?
Okay, or do you have any other comments on the moderate, Sean?
On the moderate? No, I'm, I'm, I'm maximally.
Okay, Commissioner Fontanardi, you are next.
I've got two questions. One is, why is it important to reduce the two fifty is a very, very small unit? It's basically a college dorm, and I'm worried that if we go down that road, first of all, you get exceptional turnover, people are not going to stay in those units for very long. And second, you know, it's sort of a, you know, it's packing a lot of people in a small area, and I'm not sure that's really desirable. So that's my first question. Find on the importance of that, going from three seventy-five to two fifty.
So the, the two fifty, I think, came basically like feedback, you know, from just discussions with, you know, the people who pursue projects like this, you know, and what's necessary to have flexibility in the unit size. You know, I think there's, but the two fifty came from, I believe it was from the building code in terms of like an efficiency unit, you know, that could still be a dwelling unit. I think what, what we heard from the moderate income developers, you know, these, these will tend to be largely smaller units, you know, studios and the like. But, you know, with the lack of any financial support for something, you know, for projects like this, it's sort of, you know, they're targeting both, I think, both younger and older populations, actually. You know, who, who are interested in these kinds of units. But that's where the two fifty came from anyways. It wasn't sort of pulled out from, from the air. We were kind of, I believe, looking at the building code.
Okay, well, I still think it's unbelievably small and not desirable. Now, the next question, and this actually covers a lot of areas, which is the no minimum off-street parking. I know the state is requiring that, but I am concerned that when a developer makes the calculation of how much parking am I going to build versus cost of land and all the other variables, they're going to tend to underpark and essentially spread the parking load onto the neighbors and onto the neighboring streets. So it would be good to have in all of these areas where we are backed into, you know, minimum parking, have that those projects that are built under those guidelines with those, let's say, are freedoms, that they not allowed to get parking permits, off-site parking permits. Because that's just an invitation to use up the streetscape, if you will. And the first people there get to do it for the lowest cost, and then after that, it becomes very expensive for everybody else.
You know, we're going to have to look into that, I think, as to as to whether that would be possible to do, to limit permits in that way. You know, as you're aware, like, when we're talking about the moderate income overlay, it is within the half mile of major transit stop, which actually aligns right up with AB twenty ninety-seven. So we were, we were thinking, we were thinking about this even before that state law was written, and now it's, you know, not a choice of the city in terms of establishing minimum parking requirements, but we're certainly happy to look into the possibility of that kind of a limitation, because we're not, I'm not certain that would, that it would be allowed.
Why, why wouldn't it be allowed? Where would be, where would be the restriction?
So I can, I can hop in here. There are visions in the vehicle code. So as you know, on-street parking is public right-of-way, which is regulated differently than off-street parking, which is generally private property. So there are provisions in the vehicle code that deal with a city's ability to regulate off, on-street parking. There is an AG opinion, an attorney general opinion, that kind of calls that practice into question. We can look to check again to see if there's any new developments in that, but essentially, it's an idea of discriminating against who is eligible to apply for on-street parking. That's the gist of the potential issue.
Well, again, what's happening is, as I've just mentioned, we're shifting the risk from the development to the general community. And, and we are trying to minimize that risk, and, you know, if they want to not build parking spaces, and cars will not magically disappear tomorrow, they don't want to build a parking space, then that means they want to use everybody else's parking spaces, and that's going to create a parking war in our city, which is already kind of maxed out parking-wise, so I'd like to know why, where is the law written that we cannot? Well, you're not, if you're not providing on-site parking, and you're building the size of buildings that we're going to be seeing in the future, that's going to have a huge impact on everybody around them, and not a good impact. So I'd like to know why we can't regulate that.
Yeah, so.
So as I mentioned, the vehicle code can preempt some of the city's ability to regulate what happens on the public right-of-way, including on streets, right? So the vehicle code can preempt some of what the city does. There is some, I said, an attorney general opinion that calls that into question. We will do further legal analysis again to, to double check, to see if there's anything new that has arisen.
Okay, I'd like to hear that when the time comes.
Commissioner Fresco, you are next.
Hi, everyone. I have a, well, in terms of moderate overlay, my one question is, well, I have a couple of questions, but the main thing is, why are we limiting it to half-mile from transit when we're trying to get permanently fair housing to distribute different income levels into different neighborhoods?
So we, there were discussions of a citywide overlay or, you know, having this, you know, having moderate income housing elsewhere. I think it's just, it was what came out of the housing element process. Certainly, if you feel differently now, we could expand it, you know, this is just, this is just in compliance with what the housing element program says in terms of focusing it around transit, and I think some of the thinking was, you know, the, given what's necessary to make these projects work in terms of smaller units, you know, who might be occupying these units, the proximity to transit, you know, seemed to make sense in terms of a synergy between these moderate income units and the proximity to transit, but you know, it's not, I just, it's not like it wasn't discussed, you know, in terms of having, you know, this overlay be more expansive throughout the city and, you know, through the public process. You know, this was the outcome.
So Commissioner Landris was talking about a different kind of expansion that would include more residentially zoned parcels without displacing people. And I'm kind of thinking a different way, which is to try to encourage some of these moderate income properties in neighborhoods that are too expensive for affordable housing to buy land, but maybe a moderate income project that's more differently financed could be able to land in a different neighborhood. And so I guess, but if we expand the zone beyond that half-mile radius, wouldn't that make Sean's question much, a much bigger issue and a bigger question? So, you know, I mean, I, I guess what I'm asking is, when you look at that, we, can we balance, can you give us information to help us balance whether it's more helpful to expand by zone or if it's more helpful to expand by proximity to transit?
So.
I'm basically asking for information to be, more information and parsed a little more carefully so we can make a good decision.
So I think what I heard Commissioner Landris asked was, you know, with respect to this policy question, we were talking about residentially zoned parcels in that half-mile from the Metro E-line, because it does implicate, you know, a lot of residentially zoned parcels, as you could see on the maps, and then we can certainly take a look at, you know, how many parcels that implicates if it excludes, I think I heard rent-controlled properties, and I believe the other one was R one parcels was the other kind of like condition you want to look at there. In terms of what you're asking, I'm not too clear when you say, are you talking about like a bigger radius? Or do you have specific zones or neighborhoods in mind? That would be really helpful for us to.
Well, my first gut reaction would be to take out the half-mile transit and continue to exclude non-commercial zones, residential zones. But there is that idea that, you know, we want to create more opportunities for moderate income housing, and so, but if we expand it, so it's not limited to a half-mile from transit, it becomes such a big thing that it puts a lot of our existing rent-controlled units and, you know, is it a manageable thing? It just becomes a much bigger project.
I, I guess what I'm asking is, do you have a, do you have something in mind when you say something other than the half-mile?
I would like to just include all the commercial zones in my, in my, I think that would be a different way of approaching it that would allow more of a citywide peppering of moderate income housing, but I don't want to take away thought of doing it a different way, but maybe a combination. So if we consider expanding to residential zones, we obviously have to do protect, add protective limits. But would it be too much to make it all zones citywide? And do you see what I'm saying? It's like, it's a good, it could be a choice between John's idea or this other idea where it stays the way it is. or this other idea where it stays the way it is. Or maybe there's a combination of those two choices. That's what I'm trying to get at. Thank you, sorry. So my other questions are other issues, so I'll just save them.
Mr. Raskin?
Yeah, just throwing out an idea out there in terms of, you know, potentially excluding residentially zoned sites. Perhaps we can consider adopting the standard from SB 9 that says that if a site has been leased in the past three years, that it would potentially be excluded. You know, I'm mildly concerned that that could lead to a rush of Ellis Act evictions. But, you know, I think it's something we should perhaps think about. And, yeah, I'll just say too that I'm intrigued by the idea of expanding the overlay. Perhaps we could consider doing something like a quarter-mile or a half-mile from major transit stops to capture sites in proximity to boulevards. But that's all the comments I got.
Commissioner Lambert?
I just want to respond. Did you say SB 9, Ellis? Did you refer to SB 9?
I did, yeah.
Because SB 9 has far broader protections of existence. And I would suggest that we look at that. And in regards to Ellis, one of the unqualified properties for this is anything that's been Ellis, no pun intended. So we, I mean, the exceptions in SB 9 for which you cannot build on are much more robust than SB 330. So I would follow with Ellis in his thinking that we should look at SB 9 protections. And Ellis, SB 330 is really sort of lower-income rent-controlled units, which are important. But in my opinion, all rent-controlled units are important. And SB 9 covers all rent-controlled units.
Commissioner Landers, let me get in the game here a little bit first before you speak again, please. So on the residential, I think I'm more supportive of where Nina was heading than Sean. I think that, you know, when we went through the loose process, there was a big promise about protecting residential neighborhoods to the greatest extent, period, all residential neighborhoods. And then when the state stepped in and gave us these huge Rena numbers, I mean, the community is going to see an outrageous amount of development, well, potential, large amount of development. And to the extent we can offer some protections to the residents, I think we should still do that. So that's a big reason why I'm opposed to including other residential areas. But also, I think it also heads in the wrong direction of protecting R1 zones and rent-controlled units. Because these are areas where people are able to create generational wealth through their R1 ownership or the fact that they are rent-controlled units that are not income-restricted. So for those two reasons, I really would rather see it expanded to the whole city. So I'm going to leave you with that. I do have another question for staff about incentives, but we'll come back to that if Commissioner Landers wants to talk about this residential, the area.
Yeah, I definitely want to exclude all the rent-controlled parcels, you know, from the get-go. That should never not be on the table, and that's why I want to study that option. I'm, I'm, I hear you on the generational wealth side. What I am thinking about is, in a GF world that we now live in, the incentive, there are, there may be R1 lot where there is some interest in utilizing SB 9 to create multiple units of housing on those sites. I would love to create a pathway that incentivizes those parcels to become moderate-rate housing. And if there's a way, because we're looking at parcels, and I say GS because I'm looking, I'm thinking about parcels that are going to be valued at the initial development, you know, on the initial development side at below $8 million, right? Which is, there are a number of parcels like that. Now, there is a displacement issue, which Commissioner Raskin rightly raised and is particularly acute when it comes to displacing renters from single-family homes. But there is, because they're not protected under, there's no Ellis protections for single-family renters, and we want to be very careful about that. But my fear is that those folks are going to get displaced, like there's a real incentive to displace those folks to create mega mansions and to create luxury triplex solutions. But if we kind of dial that back a little bit, we might actually both slow the pace of it and also direct folks to moderate-rate housing, particularly where, particularly in situations where families have moved out from a single-family rental, and we're not talking about an eviction. We could actually, you know, not use Ellis, like not use the Ellis Act as our guide, but sort of exclude any property where an eviction has taken place in order to protect the single-family homes. But I would love to see an incentive in R1 to go to moderate-rate housing, even low, you know, low-density, lower-density, multi-family or sort of duplex, triplex, quad. And I think this could be a way to do it. I could be completely off-base, right? But there might be some opportunities, and I would hate to rule them out by simply saying, nope, we can't use this program in R1.
Mr. Lambert?
I just want to point out, and I discussed this with Ross some months ago, there are hundreds of single-family homes. And yes, some of them are rented, but some of them are owner-occupied, and I don't know what the numbers of those are. So if you want to exclude renter-occupied, single families, that's fine. But there may be owner-occupants who actually do want to develop on their land, and they should be allowed to do that. Because in my opinion, single-family home in R2 district is really under utilization of that property. In terms of R1, I'm not sure you could even, well, except for SB 9, you couldn't really build the kind of overlay district housing we're talking about here. If you added 33 feet in R1, that would be a 51-foot building in the middle of an R1 block. So I think that might be a problem for a lot of reasons, but anyway.
So I've heard, we got to give some direction to staff, and I'm not sure we've gotten to that point yet. It seems, it seems to me that, you know, Sean, you're trying to kind of create a new program that is incentivizing moderate R1, which I'm not sure we have the time and the time right now to create a brand-new program. So I keep circling back to, are we going to leave it the half-a-mile? Or are we going to expand it to the city? That seems to me the bigger question in front of us. And I could be wrong, but that's, until you guys correct me on that, that's where I'd like to focus our attention to give Jing some response.
I frankly don't think AB 1763 works in R1. So I think we're talking about a very different program in R1 than what we're talking about tonight.
I can, we can leave R1 off the table for now. I mean, I still would love to not incentivize mega mansions and luxury, you know. If there's a way to get moderate housing on some of the smaller R1 parcels, I'd love to see it. But I agree with Commissioner Lambert that the single-family owner-occupied in R2 is a far more, is a far better target for this program, 100%. That's a great point.
Oh, it sounds like looking at the idea of expanding the area from beyond just the transit zone and looking at ways to include multifamily residential zones with protections for existing tenants is where you, that seems to be the two things that more than one person has said.
Well, to be clear, I'm not supportive of, I think we should exclude the residential zones.
I'm kind of leaning your way on that, but I would like to hear what staff comes up with in terms of analysis of how much, how many, I mean, can we look at that map again? Didn't you show us a map that showed us where all the rent-controlled units are? And that might give us a way to make a decision?
Yeah, Ross, can you put that one back on the screen, Slide 7?
But I'm missing the distinction between the rent control and the non-rent control. I mean, we're still worried about displacement, whether they are under rent-controlled unit or a non-rent-controlled unit. What am I, what am I missing there?
Well, SB 9 says that anything that was tenant-occupied in the past three years could not be in the program. So that's rent control and everything else.
But, yeah, so, I mean, what this is telling us is, look at how many rent-control sites there are in our non-R1 residential zones, which makes me be inclined to go with what Jim says because basically that's just.
But Nina, there are tons of single-family homes that are owner-occupied. Shouldn't those be allowed to be redeveloped if the owner wants to do that?
But they can do that with SB 9. They're not, we're not going to put, they're not going to put a moderate-income building on their, on an R1 zone.
No, I'm talking R2.
Okay, well.
I don't know, I think individual owners who aren't really interested in equity housing aren't going to be quite as focused on providing moderate-income units.
If they get a hype on us, they might.
Okay, hold on, we see a new panelist who always wants to give us some good information. Can you help us?
So just quickly, and I understand there are many ways to kind of try to get to where you're going. I just want to remind the commission that we generally do zoning by district and actual land uses, and rent control is not a separate land use. Rent-controlled properties and non-rent-controlled properties still fall under the multiple-unit dwelling category in terms of land uses. So I just kind of want to remind the commission that it is generally zoning by district and then also by land use. So we don't generally exclude rent-controlled properties as a separate land use because that doesn't exist in the zoning ordinance. But to your point, the protections under SB 9 or SB 330 or even the a density bonus law that kind of are either replacement requirements or are, you're not eligible for this program unless you meet these conditions in terms of rental. That would probably be an easier way to accomplish that goal. So that's just something to think about for you.
And again, I think we need to find some easy wins for us and staff, and we don't have to have the cutest and the best program. We just need an efficient program. And it seems that it's easier to either leave it at the half-mile or to say that it's non-residential zoning in the city. And if we decide that it's not getting enough housing in five years, but there's some value in it, we can expand it.
I think we should also expand feasibility issues. If nothing's being built in two years, that could have a feasibility.
Then that could tell us that there's a reason to make a change. So where are we, team? I know where I'm at, and I know where I want the decision I want to make, but I want everybody else to be a part of this decision-making. Commissioner Fonte Menardi?
I would support the half-mile radius, keeping that.
And no residential included. Okay.
Can we do a straw poll on the, where are we on the?
We need to, because now, well, we need to do that. But we have two options. Let's do a straw poll on keeping it a half-mile, no residential. Let's vote on that. All those in favor, put your hand up. I got one hand. All those interested in expanding it to all non-residential zones in the city? Two hands, three hands? Okay, so we have, where are Commissioner Raskin?
I'm interested in expanding it to owner-occupied, owner-occupied R2, R3 with appropriate SB 9 and SB 330-style protections.
That's what I agree to. A half-mile with that?
Citywide.
Yeah, well, I don't care.
I'm on board with that too, by the way.
Pardon?
You like that? You like that?
Yeah, I like Commissioner Landers' proposal.
Yeah, I like that too.
Well, Jing, that's going to be the most direction you get because that's three votes in that way.
The citywide with single-family homes, right? That are owner-occupied.
The citywide, like the whole city? Owner, citywide, so that would include all the commercial zones, obviously. And then in terms of the residential zones, owner-occupied in the R2, R3? With the SB 9, yeah, with the, like, owner-occupied, multi-unit zones with the appropriate SB 9 restrictions.
SB 9 and also take a look at SB 330 restrictions.
It's much weaker, Sean.
Well, if staff is studying it, there are, there are some look-backs in SB 330 that don't, that I don't think are in SB 9 because it's designed for owner-occupied housing.
SB 9 has a story.
You guys let them, the staff will look at those. We don't need to debate it tonight. So then I'm going to ask my next question on the moderate income. So you're talking about up to four incentives. Does every project going to get four incentives when they, because they have to have all moderate-income units?
Yes.
Okay, great. I have no more questions on this topic. So let's move on to the next topic, and who wants to start that discussion? Commissioner Fresco?
I just had one small question of something you said in your report that the accumulate the community assembly use has to be the primary use on the site. So does that limit the size of the housing development? What does that mean?
I mean, I don't think it limits, this was like this, it was intended to be for the parking lots associated with the community assembly use. So it doesn't mean you're removing that use. And that was the focus of it. Because I think, again, in talking with community assembly users who expressed interest in pursuing this sort of thing, you know, they weren't looking to remove their use or to relocate their congregations, as the case may be. You know, so that was the idea is that, you know, this is surface parking lots associated with community assembly uses, you know, of which does a range of community assembly types of uses. But, you know, the caveat is it does have to be the primary use on the property because the housing is sort of like an associated part of it.
I see Nina makes a good point, though. What, how do you define primary use? Because if your, if your community assembly area is 10,000 square feet, but your units that you've added now have 15,000 square feet in them, they become the primary use. So maybe you just need to wordsmith it a little bit, that the community use needs to be maintained.
Yeah, I think that's what we meant. That's a good point.
That's what I hoped you meant, but I just wasn't sure. So, yeah, I think that's just a clarification. Okay, that was my only question.
I know we picked up some public comments on the community assembly use too, which I'm sure you're looking at, Jing. Go ahead, Commissioner Landers.
Yeah, in general, I'm supportive on this. I do think that we need to assume that there will be some version of what, this is, the state has been looking into this for a while. It's how we got this idea in the first place, was that we picked up a proposal that didn't ultimately pass in Senate Bill SB 899. And we incorporated it into local planning here. But I think we can expect that the state's going to be back with another take, you know, with another bite at that apple. So that's good for us. I do support staff's inclination to impose a TDM and unit-mix requirements on the market-rate housing. I strongly support that. My question for colleagues is, because of the way that we've framed this exemption, would we want to consider, in the name of, you know, encouraging these community assembly uses to provide housing for their own employees, would we want to create some sort of, like, an interior exemption for up to three, four, or five units? Like, if there are only three or four or five market-rate units? three, four, or five units? Like if there are only three or four or five market rate units and they are, you know, not luxury units, somehow we figure out a way to frame that. Um, maybe they're restricted to less than 200% AMI or something like that. We wouldn't impose TDM. But if they want to do a full-on, like, we're going to go 50% market rate because we got to make our money back, then yeah, they got to have TDM and everything. I, I just was trying to figure out a way, you know, we're going to allow manager units in there, but if we're trying to figure out a way to get um, some just above affordable, let's say employee housing into those units, um, would we want to incentivize that in some form? Like impose the TDM above unit number five or something?
Wouldn't that be kind of hard to monitor?
Well, you would see it on the, you would, you would see it on the proposal, right? Because you, you'd, they would come in and they would say, we're doing, we're only doing five units of market rate and we, you know, with or without some sort of income test, that would be something for us to decide whether that's worth having a deed restriction on. But I'm just looking, I'm AMI. I think it would be nice to let
market rate if they're geared to the people who I don't know if you've looked at the income and the rent charts for the year.
Oh, okay.
I doubt they make a lot.
Personages, you know?
Right. So deed restricting it to like moderate income, for example, would be, okay.
Yeah, I would not impose TDM and, and, and unit mix on moderate income units within that building, even if they're not technically, you know, 80% AMI.
Yeah, that, that's already written into the red lines. Like it's not for affordable deed restricted units, of which moderate income would be included in that, you know, that wouldn't apply. Um, I think to clarify for market rate, it does, the TDM requirement's kicking at 16 units. So you know, it's not, yeah, they don't, they don't apply, you know, where it's small.
Oh, then, then it's taken care of. That's great. All right.
Any other commission comments that they want to get out there? Commissioner Fontanardi?
Yeah, I would be in favor of maintaining the unit mix. We keep pushing families out. And this is one area that if we're going to get some housing, some of it might be two and three-bedroom apartments. It would be very useful.
Mr. Raskin?
Yeah, when we were first discussing this back, uh, when we were, uh, doing some early rounds of the housing elements, uh, two years ago, maybe, um, we had discussed the idea of offering a first, um, well, a right of priority to folks uh, were members of congregations that have been displaced from Santa Monica. Um, I know that, uh, a right trigger has been incorporated into other city policies, but I wonder if there's a way to make that in here as well, given that there are so many people who are members of congregations here in Santa Monica who are, uh, you know, either victims of displacement or the descendants of displacement. So I don't know. Yet, yet another thing to look at, I realize, but, um, something that I hope we can, we can, uh, take a look at at some point.
So for deed restricted units, um, they would be required to select from the city's bill of market um, waiting lists regardless. You're, you're not, you're not allowed to just, you know, create your own list. It always has to come from the the city's list and to the extent that the city's list, um, you know, in includes, um, a priority, you know, populations, you know, through programs created by the council and what have you. You know, that would obviously be in effect. Um, I, I just want to make sure you're not talking about like com- the, the congregation, you know, or the community assembly applicant, in this case, like reserving units for their own for their, for their own employees or what have you, that, that may pose fair housing questions.
Yeah, yeah, I don't, I don't know if it's possible. I mean, I was thinking primarily of, of the, well, exclusively the units that were not, you know, subject to the, um, city's, uh, you know, placement policies for deed restricted units, since that's got its own uh, methodology. Um, and yeah, maybe it's not possible. I don't know. It's, you know, something I just wanted to throw out there for us to consider.
Okay, any other comments? It looks like, okay, let's ask one more time. Do we get any callers to call in since we've been speaking?
No, we did not.
All right. Jing, is there any burning questions that we're not giving you enough direction on?
No, I think that was, I think I thought we needed on our policy question for the surface parking lots, um, the community assembly lots, excuse me. Um, so it sounds like we can move to the surface parking lots program? Surface parking lots and residential zones.
Commissioner Landers?
Yeah, I, I'll just open this up by asking if the staff had had a chance to review, um, Ms. Larmour's correspondence because uh, it looked like she did a pretty careful job of reading through where there might be some gaps, uh, and trying to close them. Um, and so I just didn't know if, if you'd had a chance to look at that and what your thoughts were before we weigh in.
Yeah, we, so we got that a little bit late in the day and we're, we were trying to read through it. Um, I think we will probably try and reach out to her individually. Um, and there, I, I, I think to clarify, um, there, it appears there may be a little bit of misunderstanding about the applicability of the program because as I mentioned, um, this program is not limited only to A lots. It is a bigger universe, um, than that. It's, it's all residentially zoned surface parking lots in the city. Um, so it's much broader than just A lots. And what we do intend, I think some, some of the, what I, what we could tell from the concerns raised about, um, allowing, uh, you know, parking to be placed, you know, if there's an associated commercial use, could that parking be in the residential zone? The answer is yes. Could the access be taken from the residential zone parcel? The answer is yes. And, uh, you know, we tried to relate the provisions of this special program um, to the existing A lot program. And there's a provision there that says, you know, where there's a conflict, this special surface parking lot, um, you know, new, new section we've created overrides, um, you know, if there's a restriction in the A lots. Um, you know, so we were trying to be more permissive and responsive to what we had heard in terms of, um, you know, barriers to the production of housing in these surface parking lots. But, um, you know, so I, I, we, we did have a chance to take a quick look at it and I think, um, what we would try to do is, you know, again, clarify that this, um, to the extent some of the comment was about incentivizing or supporting the redevelopment of like the commercial parcel. You know, just like this program really is about incentivizing housing on the residentially zoned surface parking lot, not incentivizing its retention in some way, you know, so I think that's where maybe we may need to have some follow-up.
Yeah, I think he was just looking to make, I mean, I think I read her comments to be primarily concerned around sort of consolidation, that if there were projects that were looking to consolidate and redevelop, as you say, that, that, that those gaps be closed just to maintain the flexibility. And I thought that was, I, I thought that was generally good thinking because it was, he was essentially going to these cases and making sure that certain projects wouldn't fall through the cracks in the spirit of the program. Um, and that's why I asked the way I asked, because, um, maybe there's a, maybe it's a question of clarification rather than, I didn't see her looking for politics pages, right? I was just looking for clarification.
I think that's what we're saying. It may be that, that, that certainly is what's intended, you know, because again, this program was written specifically for the residentially zoned parking lot and not rewriting standards for the commercial zone in some way. That, that wasn't the spirit of this program. You know, it was about, again, the incentivizing redevelopment of the underutilized surface parking lot. Um, you know, that's what we think our edits say and you know, that's probably where it's, you know, I think it, we probably need to do some follow-up just to make sure that fully understanding if something was missed is based on, I think generally what I understand the concern, I think our edits actually do what, what is being asked. Um,
Okay.
Yeah.
And then I, my, my, um, my other concern was I noticed that you were assuming a unit density on the residential parking lots, the residentially zoned parking lots of one unit per 2,000 square feet. And it strikes me that if particularly the A lots, um, north of Montana, some of those actually might be SB, technically might be SB nine eligible. And I'm, I'm, um, and I don't know how big those lots are. So I wouldn't want the density to be less than what otherwise might be permissible under the law. So if it's a 5,000-square-foot lot, um, they probably still have the right to get to a slightly higher density. Um, and I would be inclined to allow them to do so, particularly so close to a commercial zone. I'm not saying go to one every thousand, but I'm also not saying, you know, locking it in at one at 2,000 strikes me as, um, you know, that only, that only really works on a 6,000-square-foot lot. I don't know if there are 5,500-square-foot lots out there or 5,000-square-foot lots out there, um, where we might want to create more flexibility.
Yeah, that wasn't, so that one per 2,000 is only for R1 parcels because obviously there's no dense, you know, it's like one unit on there. So
Right, that's what I'm saying. I'd be more
Yeah, it doesn't override.
I'd be more comfortable with one to 1,500 unit, one to 1,500 square feet. If you're looking for a hard number, I'd prefer one unit per 1,500 rather than one unit per 2,000. I'll just phrase it that way.
We're not allow it what's consistent with SB nine.
There you go.
I, I think to be clear, this was not intent, this was not overriding SB nine. If someone wants to do an SB nine project, look, we have an SB nine ordinance coming to you, you know, that is state law. It doesn't, this was not intended to override that. This was, if someone wanted to opt into this like special program to redevelop it with, you know, not, not the SB nine way, because SB nine sort of is a multiple-phase way, you know, a, a, a little bit of an odder way to get to multiple units. This is much more straightforward, right? It's just a straight density calculation as opposed to cobbling together primary, you know, duplexes and ADUs. Get two more units on the R1. It is a path, SB nine provides a pathway, but this is, I, I think with this program, you were talking about some of those larger sites, you probably get more than you would through SB nine. Um, so, you know, I think, but wasn't the intention to like override SB nine at all. It's sort of like two separate programs. Or two separate options, I guess.
I think, I think what Sean was really alluding to is just don't allow less than SB. I mean, don't, if you do less, people are going to not go for that option, I think.
Okay.
Um, before we move on, just Sheila, allow us, anytime we get a caller, if we are lucky enough to get a caller, please just interrupt us and let us know.
Yes, I was going to jump in. Actually, we do have one, uh, caller in the queue.
Great.
Last four digits, 1463. You're now in the meeting and you will have three minutes for your comment. If you could please state your full name.
Good evening, commissioners. It's Paul Larmour with Harding Larmour, Kucheran Kozel. Uh, thanks for hearing me this evening. With respect to the residentially zoned commercial parking lots, I appreciate staff's response and work, um, on that issue. But I think it's important to realize that these lots don't exist in isolation. They have existed with the adjacent commercial property, right, and together for decades. And so there is a separate housing element program that incentivizes houses, housing on the commercial streets as well. And so I think there is a huge missed opportunity if we only look at incentivizing housing on the R-zone lots and don't look at section 9.27.110, which is not at this point proposed for change and regulates those lots. So that section says that if the commercial lot is redeveloped for another use, for example, housing project, that the surface parking lot can't remain. And while I know we would all prefer the entire lot to be redeveloped, both the commercial and the residential with housing, it may not be practical because sometimes you only have 7,500 square feet or 15,000 or maybe a 10,000-square-foot lot along the commercial street. So if the property owner is willing to add housing on the commercial boulevard and doesn't have to increase the amount of parking spaces on the surface lot, I don't see why we wouldn't allow that. So there's a few issues in that section, 9.27.110, that I, um, request that staff would review. And I'm, I've looked at about eight case studies, um, and various configurations along some of the boulevards and would be happy to meet with staff and share that with them. Ultimately, that property owner went away because of all the barriers in the house, in the code. So that's why I'm trying to bring it forward to you now. The other two comments were about the city's DRP findings. And I don't know if anyone else other than me remembers this, but the code prior to the 2015 update had a DRP finding which, excuse me, had language which clarified that, that very vague finding, finding A that says it has to be compatible with surrounding sites and neighborhoods, that um, that if the, the project complied with the general plan standards, if the size of the project complied, it would be deemed to be compatible. I know you all are thinking about changing that word compatible separate from that comment and that's fine, but whatever term you ultimately end up with, I think language should be reinstated that clarifies that the planning commission, the finding, it doesn't grant them additional discretion to deny a project if it is consistent with the size allowed in the code. And that clarification was included prior to the 2015 update. So it's just asking for reinstatement. And finally, with respect to the ARB discussion that you all had last hearing, um, after that discussion, I went through and reviewed the red lines again, and I'm concerned with the way the phrasing is for the now final ARB hearing because they've just used the scope that was previously or currently exists today for the preliminary hearing, which is much broader and talks about scale, circulation, massing than the typical ARB jurisdiction. And that creates a conflict with the ARB criteria in 9.55140. I'm asking for a change to that section which talks about the ARB final hearing to strike the, the language that, that talks about the expanded scope that's currently existing for the preliminary review and just cite to the criteria in, for typical, um, ARB final approval that has been existing, uh, for many years now. Thank you.
Very much. Commissioners, do we have any questions?
Oh, no. Sorry, no.
Okay. Well, that was a timely call. Okay, um, let's move on with our, our discussion. Commissioner Lambert, we're still talking.
I, I just have a question of staff and it has to do, and I hope you did discuss this when I was out of the room, but it has to do with something all raised. That is nothing we're proposing regarding the parking lots precludes a developer from using the density bonus program, correct?
No.
Okay. I just want to make that clear because she actually, you know, put some amendments into her red line that would make that clear. Thanks.
Um, I mean, I was going to throw it out there. When we talk about how the, the existing parking has to be replaced and I understand why we're saying that has to be done. You know, in this time where the state is waiving all parking, I think that it, it kind of disincentivizes this re, this redevelopment of, of just the back lot. And that people would be more inclined to just redevelop their entire site where they now don't have any parking requirement. So, I mean, again, I'm not saying we shouldn't try to replace that parking. I just think it could work as a disincentive in the end. Okay. Other comments on Commissioner Fontanardi?
Yeah, I'm wondering if we should have a discussion, you know, what we're really saying is that if someone wants to do housing on what's called the A lots and we know it's a larger family than that, uh, their biggest problem would be maintaining the existing parking. Uh, and that's, that's the significant issue. Should we give them a parking break of some sort, like they can reduce the existing parking, I'll choose a number by 10%. And that would allow them to get the ramps down into the lower parking for the residences. Uh, because, you know, they're going to be putting big pylons to hold up all this housing above the parking. Uh, you know, it's, it's going to involve basically giving up some parking and putting more of it underground. And I'm wondering if there's a way of saying the surface And I'm wondering if there's a way of saying the surface parking still serves, let's call it the business for lack of a better word. And above all that, there's parking for the housing which is above the commercial parking. And that would be a nice relationship because the. Residential parking would be very secure and not mixed with the commercial parking. And the commercial parking would be in and out from one of the side streets. Uh, and so I'm just wondering if there's some benefit. A very modest parking reduction to help them achieve those good, good functioning designs.
Well, it certainly helps, I think, address kind of the concern I raise, so I'm supportive of, I'm supportive of staff analyzing it.
So like just a percentage. You know, whatever the existing parking spaces are, a percentage reduction. Of that, you, you, you would still replace the requirement, but you know, maybe like seventy percent of it as opposed to all of it.
Yeah, eighty percent, whatever it is. Uh, and then maybe there's a threshold that you can't reduce it down to less than. You know, if you're only dealing with five cars, you know, you don't want to give up one car because one of those has to be handicapped. You know, there's a whole bunch of other constraints, but. Uh, anyway, some, some idea.
Uh, other commission comments on the, on the redevelopment of the surface parking lots? Okay, Commissioner Lambert?
I just have one, um, one comment. Uh, Paul, and I'm not sure this is the venue or the. Section to be discussing it, but about access to the housing uh, uh, to be built on parking lots. Remember the Saint Monica's site on whatever that was, Lincoln, was it Lincoln? Uh, had an access issue where they couldn't access the project. During tonight? It does allow access taken. Place. You know, what we. Okay.
Commented last week about the compatibility language. And I actually really like her, her language. If that was in the code before and I would order just to use it because it really, it really eliminates the. It defines compatibility and, and then we can use that word. We'll have to come up with some new wordsmith, but we've now defined what that is.
Yeah, we're, we're definitely happy to take a look at that. Um. I, I think one thing to note is the DR findings do apply to both housing. And non-house, like commercial projects as well. Um, so you know, we may consider. Uh, you know, something like that, but maybe limited to just housing projects. Um, you know, that's just. Again, you know, the, because DR is applied to all, all, all projects, right? Not just housing projects. Um, and if the interest is in housing, you know, maybe it's limited just to housing projects and not also commercial projects as well. To the extent the commission wants to retain. You know, discretion with respect to projects that are not housing.
Yeah, we will need some work.
Yeah.
That was a little bit of a joke. Okay, um, any other comments, folks? Hit all three programs or all the programs you want us to talk about?
Yes, that's what we had tonight.
Okay, um. I think at that point, we're going to close this, this public hearing. And we're going to move on to agenda item number ten, which is public comment on non-agendized items. If we could get that. One minute shot clock up.
We did not receive any calls.
Okay, um, commissioners, thank you for your time. We'll see you back here next week. And with that, we'll adjoint, adjourn the meeting at seven oh five PM. Have a nice evening.